Ladies and gentlemen, I pledge allegiance to my flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, and we are going to make a few adjustments to the agenda. For instance, we're going to skip the approval of the meeting minutes until the end, and we will give the floor to Chief Gardett. He's got a couple of recommendations he'd like us to consider.
I do, so we'll start with lieutenant's position. A little background for those on TV here that don't know anything about it. Over here, be better.
Behind the podium, right?
Yeah, that would be the easiest, but...
You're on television.
I just feel like it blocks my...
Did you forget to go to hair and makeup?
I did. Was there such a thing? Was it downstairs? So, we've had a lieutenant's position on the books for a long time, just as we've had corporal's positions in the contract for a long time that have never been filled. Very similar to the detective's position that we just codified with the select board last year in the contract. Chief Chamberlain was, for all practical purposes, using me in a lieutenant's position, doing some extra work during the day, things like that. This past January, a year ago, he assigned me to an administrative schedule Monday through Friday, working with him side by side, which was effectively a lieutenant's position. We had talked about putting it forth years ago. We never did. With Chief Chamberlain's departure, the difference between my pay, his pay, the budget, it felt like the opportune time to put a position into effect where it requires no further appropriations. We have good staff, and the ability to work side by side with somebody on a day-to-day basis fills in a lot of gaps that the rotating four-and-two schedule that I was on previously didn't necessarily give the opportunity for. When I was here six months ago, we talked about whether or not you would appoint somebody if I brought them forward. We had two patrolmen's positions to fill with Chief Chamberlain's departure, Detective Johnson's departure, and then we had to run a sergeant's exam process, which took quite a lot of time, and Sergeant Ferguson was the first candidate from that. And then I posted the lieutenant's position last. Sergeant Fugere is interested in the position. He's worked with me for the last six months on essentially what I was doing the prior six months, so no operational changes to the department we made. I can't say enough good things about how Steve has worked with me over the last six months in this position. He'll be in charge of all training. The whole new Police Standards Reform Act is a significant burden on all the departments. The requirements involved, the record-keeping, he'll be involved in that. The majority of the grant work, and then we'll send him to some of the internal affairs classes to specialize in that also. It gives an opportunity for, in addition to my moving up, it brings as many people as possible. Steve, two sergeants, and then Detective Chase was also to move up. So, part of my goal, moving to chief, was to bring as many people with me as possible. And like I said, with the budgetary concerns, now is the opportune time. So, other than that, I don't think I have a whole lot to say unless you have any questions. We hashed a lot of it over last time. Like I said, there's no budgetary things. There'll be no operational changes, other than I believe Sergeant Ferguson will end up on day shift with us again. But other than that, it's going to be exactly like we've been running it for the last 13 months. It's worked really well, and I can't see any reason why I wouldn't continue to work well. I think it's a great future for the department.
Okay. Are you chomping at the bit there as far as budgets, Mr. King?
No.
You're all set? Okay. Can we hear from Officer Fugere? Tell the general public and the people in this room a little bit about yourself, Stephen?
My name's Steve Fugere. I've been with the department for almost 17 years now. The last four, I've been as a sergeant on the night shift. When Chief Gardett got promoted, that brought me onto the day shift since August, beginning of August. Like he said, I've been working kind of side by side with him in more of an administrative role since I came to the day shift. So, my entire career has been in Sterling. I started here when I was 21 years old. Like I said, I'm almost coming up on 17 years now. Basically, my big draws in the department are I do a lot of training. I'm heavily involved in training within the department and within the state. I work as a lead drill instructor for Police Academy in Pittsburgh. So, that's kind of my forte is in the training aspect. So, getting the opportunities to move up into lieutenant role and kind of take that over and leave my imprint on that, I think is a good fit for me, and I look forward to fitting into that role and benefiting the department and the town and the citizens of the town in that role.
Any questions, Sean?
I just, no, not a lot, just a couple of minor ones. Steve, I just was wondering, what will be the focus? How much grant application work? Will there be more? I see we did obtain three grants over the last three years. How will the role change? I'm just curious for the moment where a lot of the hours will go right now.
So, there'll be a little bit more time to kind of dive into the grants. So, right now, I'm writing a grant or running a grant for municipal road safety, and it is pretty time-consuming. And my role on the day shift as the supervisor is I'm still like a street supervisor, so there's times that I'm getting called out for just your regular sector calls or normal calls around town. This will kind of put me in more of an administrative role where it'll give me more of an opportunity to do that and apply for more money. But I've been pretty heavily involved in grants for a long time. It's something that I enjoy, that I like doing. So, I've been pretty active with those, but I think it'll give me more of an opportunity to apply for more grants with a little bit more time to implement them and to spread them out across the course of the year.
That's a good thing. Good thing for our town.
Yeah.
A little tedious, I would think, at times, but I mean, will this impact your role as the lead instructor up at Fitchburg State University?
Yeah, definitely. It'll take more of my time because it's an administrative position. The academy runs Monday through Friday, so it'll definitely impact that. So, I won't be able to be as involved up there as I was before, as I would like to be, but that's just, that's part of the job. I knew that I was never going to be able to stay up there for the remainder of my career just with upward movement and progression in my career. So, I'd love to stay there as much as I could, but...
Yeah, I thought it was kind of fun, you know?
Yeah, it was great. I was involved in five classes of recruits that are working from as far west as the Berkshires and all the way right outside of Boston and in the Cape. So, I've met a lot of recruits and trained a lot of recruits from all over the state. So, it was rewarding.
So, you'll still be involved somewhat with that, though, I imagine?
Yeah, I'll still have some involvement with it, but unfortunately, I won't be as involved as I was before. When I was working the overnights and a rotating schedule, it was a lot easier to be up there at the academy and helping out with that. Now, I'm on day shift, it's definitely, it's a lot harder, so...
David? No questions, just a statement that, you know, I know Chief Chamberlain and Sean have been working to get this position filled. Like Sean said, it was voted in 2002 town meeting and just never funded. Now, the stars seem to be aligned so that the position can be funded without any impact, major impact to the budget at this point in time. So, no, I think it's a welcome position, and it's good for the department, and it's a natural evolution for where the town is headed. So, a nice job, all you guys, making this happen.
It's really nice to see the support that you're getting from your fellow officers being here, and to that, that speaks very well of you. I have my own opinions, as you know.
Same as well.
I told him I was going to embarrass him, but I won't. All right, so I would entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Steve as police lieutenant.
So moved.
Seconded.
All is in favor?
Go coin aye.
Smith aye.
Grant's an aye. Thank you, Stephen, and... We look forward to the swearing-in. Of course, I'll be there.
You gotta bring donuts?
If that's what you want, Sean, if you want to report that reputation, I'm fine with it.
I think, I think I'm more of a fan of bagels, but if you want to bring donuts, nobody would complain.
Fresh bagels is good. My understanding is that you can all afford to come to Meadowbrook and get donuts.
Probably can.
Yes, I understand that. Okay, and you have something else for us, Sean?
Yes, ma'am. So, with that, that leaves a vacant sergeant's position pending any contract negotiations with Steve and Bill. I think we have it pretty much worked out anyway, but just pending any problems that run into, I'd like to recommend Tim Pluff, Officer Pluff. He's been with us 21 years. He's a Sterling success story. He's been here in town his whole life. He started with us as a part-time dispatcher, part-time patrolman, full-time patrolman. And again, he had a significant sergeant's position exam assessment center, and Tim was number two on that behind Ryan. And based on all those, I would recommend you point him to just vacant sergeant's position pending the negotiations with Bill and Steve.
Tim, you want to address the general public?
Sure, of course, he just stole it there and said it. For those who don't know, me, I'm Tim Pluff. I've been lifelong resident, 46 years of the town. Every time I come into this building, it's a flashback because, believe it or not, it was a school at one point, and I attended second grade, and I sat right there. So, no kidding, I sat literally right there in second grade, Mrs. Disnet. But like I said, lifelong resident. My parents, I'm also a lifelong resident, still live in the town. Their parents, lifelong residents, since passed on. My wife also attended this school, Butterick, when it was a school. Like Sean said, been a police officer for the department for 21 years. Started off part-time dispatch, didn't know if I was going to be a police officer at that point, but it just kind of grew on me, and you end up liking the job in that way. And so, progressed into full-time dispatch, part-time officer, and then full-time officer. And I'd been firearms instructor, milo instructor, BT instructor. I was a child safety technician for 12 years, and you've seen me at all the functions over the years, Davis Farmland, Heroes Day, and Public Safety Day. If there was an event that involved the community, I was there. One thing I want to say about this town as a resident, I think, I feel very lucky to be in this town as a resident. You have all these officers over the last year and a half coming and seeking this department, and I think it says a lot about the community, the management, select board, and the department itself to have all these officers come here, leave their respective department, leave their respective town, and start at the bottom just to come to this town, Sterling. I think it's a credit to everyone in this room here, as well as the community, that that sort of thing is happening when it's not happening in any other town, and I'm just really proud to be a part of that.
Tim, how do you see your role? More than I do, kind of same question, you know, as to Steve, but how will this differentiate your role administratively versus actually being out in the community?
I was acting sergeant for several months, so I got kind of used to the role that that undertook with payroll and filling shifts and so on. That type of thing, I am pretty much used to because even when I was an acting sergeant, being on the night shift, I was officer in charge for half the week. So, I don't think that impacts too too much. I think I'm excited for the ability to then go to the staff meetings and voice my opinion a little bit more and maybe get a little bit more involved in the community policing aspect.
Well, thanks. It just, I mean, Chief wrote up, did a nice job with the write-up, you know, preparing us for this tonight anyway. So, it really is, I think, a well-thought-out succession plan, you know, as David said, you know, and he just puts it in writing how it's working, and it is working. It's a position that was funded, well, the other one was funded back in 2002, but now it's, as he said, the stars are more aligned right now for these positions to be filled. So, and your background, 2116, I mean, there's no question about the background, the experiences you guys have had. So, I mean, I think we're lucky, very lucky to have you guys, so I'm a little surprised.
David?
Tim took the words I was going to present. It's, I was going to say, you know, what a great reflection on the department that we have so many members that have been here for years and years, and we're going to continue with their career here. You know, I work in the municipal world, and I see people come and go, and it's quite a rare thing we have going on here. And it's just a tribute to your department and to the town. So, I appreciate everything you guys do, I really do. So, thank you.
I've known you since, as well. So, yeah, I love seeing everybody being, having the ability to step up, you know, starting way back with Ryan, you know, it's good to see. And it just makes the department that much more complete. And like I said earlier, I love seeing all the support that you gentlemen give each other. It's like a very positive thing. So, with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the appointment of, Jim, to sergeant's position?
So moved.
Seconded.
All is in favor?
Go coin aye.
Smith aye.
Grant's an aye. Thanks, Grant.
I didn't thank Chief Gardett. I thanked him multiple times, but just wanted to say thank you.
Congratulations, still.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, gentlemen. See you again. Take care.
Good luck.
You, too. Good luck.
All right, so we're going to do a little shuffling, as I said earlier, with the agenda. Some things are going to take a little bit longer, so we're going to skip right down to the Flag Rentals request. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Hi.
No, 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 no.
Oh, we're going to get up there?
Oh, you bet.
Okay. Hi, I'm Joanne Flag Osgood, and I work with my brother Steve with the Flag RV Rentals that we do out of your town.
And this has already been approved by the ZBA. You followed all the rules, et cetera, and so on, so...
Yeah, special permit is being granted to do the sales. There is a modification hearing going up next week for the storage of their RVs over the winter, I think.
Okay, that was an oversight, I believe, by the ZBA initially, so...
Do we need to do anything with that?
You would have to check with, you could check with Patty Downe. She's the ZBA administrative assistant, so you can check with her.
Okay.
But I think it's just verbiage that they have to fix.
Okay.
Steve would probably know about that.
Yep.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, all proper permits and all proper, other boards and committees have been notified and involved, especially zoning, and it's up on Greenland Road, right? 145.
Yep.
I don't know, I don't see any problem with it.
David?
My question, just a question, is how many units approximately would be stored on-site?
I would probably have to just call him and ask him just because I don't know how many he plans on, but he said he's available and to just call to my pocket. So, this is just storage in general, or...
Yeah, at any one point in time, I mean, it's...
That's actually in the directions from the ZBA.
Okay. I think there were, for the port-a-potty sales, it was two model units, and then whatever comes in is going out, so maybe temporary, and then I think it was 10 or 12 RVs.
That sounds right, yeah.
You don't need to call, but...
Okay. I was just, I just didn't know if he had any plans of anything that I wasn't sure of.
It's outlined in the permit, ZBA. I do know that.
I know, you know, as long as all the committees have approved this.
Yep.
Yeah, like industrial works. So, I would entertain a motion to approve Flag Rentals slash auto dealership. Not quite sure why it falls into that, but I'm not ZBA.
So moved.
Seconded.
All is in favor?
Go coin aye.
Smith aye.
Grant's an aye. All right, thanks, Sharon. I would check with Patty if he has any more questions down here. She's actually in the building department office.
Okay, I will.
Tuesday, no, Monday through Thursday, something along those lines.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hey, are you new here?
Okay, we didn't do that. At least two, all right, and then, road race, da-da-da-da. Sir, are you here for anything in particular, or...
No.
Okay. All right, just because the next one might be a little bit long. Okay, stay awake over there.
Stay quiet.
Oh, you can speak. I have no problem with you speaking. It's just that we have Steve from our town planner, he's going to come up and give us some info as far as what his work plan is. Stephen, you want to get to the patio?
Patio.
If we had one.
You built the balcony out there?
Yeah, right, why not? And they're doing a roof.
Well, good evening, Select Board.
I'm your new town planner, Stephen Wallace, and as is my practice, at the start of every calendar year, I meet with the Select Board and I brief them on what I'm proposing as a work program for the upcoming calendar year. So, that's one of the reasons I'm here. I'm going to go through this list. There's 13 items on here, but as you know, things will come up over the year as they always do, so I'm sure this list will get supplemented as time moves forward. First thing I want to do is update the town's floodplain zoning bylaw to the state standards. I'm going to do that over the course of this year. Your new federal flood insurance rate maps will be issued by December of this calendar year, and in order to use them, you need to adopt the state's zoning code for flood-prone areas. Now, I have a draft bylaw already. I need to review it with the building commissioner since he's going to be the one enforcing it. Then we'll have town council take a look, but I anticipate bringing that to the town meeting, annual town meeting, May 2024. Second item is work with the planning board to prepare a new multifamily zoning overlay district that will comply with the state zoning requirement for MBTA-adjacent communities. As you know, the state has designated Sterling as an MBTA-adjacent community simply because we abut Leominster and they have a train station. And in the wisdom of the state legislature, they decided that all of the MBTA-type communities needed to have multifamily zoning by right. Now, how do you do that in a town with no municipal sewer? So, we are looking at some areas in the north of town in close proximity to the Northgate 40B project. We're looking at properties on North Row Road. We're looking at properties that the sewer line could be extended to if someone ever wanted to build multifamily housing out there.
Stephen, does Northgate not count for us at all?
We're including it in the district to say that we've already got some, but we can't count it towards the 156 units that the state says we need to have enough land for it.
Seriously?
Yes, ma'am, and that's come down considerably from the first iteration of the state guidance.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll go with no comment.
And the other part of that is we're not having that. It does hold some grant programs, Massworks, right, in particular?
Well, that's the kicker. For towns that don't adopt the multifamily zoning requirement, they are no longer eligible for a variety of state grants, one of them being Massworks Infrastructure Grant, which we're planning on availing ourselves to for the downtown project.
Hopefully, at some point.
Yeah. So, we don't have to find a builder and have them actually build it. We need to create the possibility, and we'll be doing it through an overlay district, essentially adding multifamily zoning, multifamily housing as one more use allowed for this particular area.
Okay.
And we'll be defining that area over the course of the year with the help of the Regional Planning Commission. That's the second item I want to talk to you about. We'll get there. All right, third on the list, work with the planning board and the zoning board on some zoning amendments for the upcoming town meeting in May. We want to add the various types of kennels to the zoning bylaws table of uses. Last year's town meeting, you saw the adoption of the various definitions for kennels, but the animal control board's proposal for adding them to the table of uses was defeated. Since that time, I've convened a meeting with planning board membership, zoning board membership, animal control board membership, and we came to agreement on where to allow the commercial-type kennels and under what circumstances by right versus special permit. The only one where we couldn't come to agreement on is personal kennels. Planning board and the zoning board are willing to allow them in the commercial and rural residential by special permit, and that's it, but the animal control board wants them allowed by right. So, we're going to move forward with this zoning amendment in the hopes that you'll support it as well so that we can go to town meeting with the planning board, zoning board, and select board in support of this. I know the animal control board won't speak in favor of this, but their proposal for how to zone for kennels got shot down last year, so they've had their chance. All right, we're going to make some minor adjustments to the zoning bylaws, accessory dwelling unit provision. Apparently, the zoning board has been getting proposals for detached or accessory dwellings in detached buildings that are essentially turning them into full-blown single-family homes, two of them on one lot. So, we're going to amend the language there. And the last thing is repeal the zoning bylaws temporary moratorium on adult-use marijuana. That's no longer needed. The citizen petition that got adopted at a town meeting about three years ago where you limit such uses to the one that you already have in town, that was legally adopted according to town council, and we don't need to fiddle with that one, but we should take away the temporary moratorium because it's no longer necessary. Fourth, I'd like to take a crack at revising the standards for the performance zone and the table of uses for your commercial and industrial uses. It needs to be updated, modernized, and expanded. This is going to be a significant undertaking that's going to take involvement from the Economic Development Committee and the general public. There's going to be, we're going to need to do a fair amount of public outreach so that the public understands what we're doing and why, and why economic development is a tax winner for the town. There's been a cost of community service study done for this town by the American Farmland Trust. It was about 10 years ago, 10 to 12 years ago by now, but their findings are in line with cost of community service studies done... done all over the country. And in Sterling's case, for every dollar generated by commercial and industrial development, it costs the town 26 cents to service it. So we need to make the case that economic development in the performance zone is a tax winner for the town. We just need to agree on what uses to allow there. So I don't have a timetable for that. It's gonna be ready when it's ready. This is not the kind of thing you wanna rush. Fifth, I'm gonna work with the Economic Development Committee to prepare a promotional map slash brochure that will advertise the town's local businesses, farms, recreation areas, historic resources, special places. That'll be something that we can have as a map that we can hand out to visitors and newcomers alike. And it'll be something we can post on our town website. We've been chugging right along with the Economic Development Committee on that project, and we should be able to have something by the fall. Work with the Open Space Committee to plan for new trails here in Sterling and links to neighboring communities. You've got a fairly energetic Open Space Committee. I have a fair amount of experience in trail planning, and they're excited to take advantage of that. We're gonna be meeting with Wachusett Greenways in early February to look at some impediments we need to deal with before we can extend our rail trail north into Lemonster. So that'll be an ongoing task. I'll also be working with the town administrator to prepare a database of earth removal permits and projects. We'll work on that in the spring and the summer. I'd also like to review the town-owned property list to see if the town owns any properties that might be suitable for either affordable housing or senior housing. I got a phone call this afternoon from a senior living in town who's at her wits' end in terms of trying to find affordable housing in this area.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a tough nut to crack.
Well, it's.
You know, and I ran into this in Westminster as well. Seniors who, their families moved out, their partner's deceased, and they've got too much house to pay taxes on. They would love to downsize and stay in town, but there's nothing for them. So I wanna take a look at your town properties and see.
It's been a conundrum for a while now. We've talked about it when we did the master plan. And obviously, the EDC has talked about it in the past. And if we could find something, it would be. Thing is, if we have senior housing and these people that live in town that wanna downsize and wanna go into senior housing or tiny houses or whatever, then they sell their house to another couple that comes in and keeps the population going, really. You know, we'll end up in some of these towns where the, and right now, Sterling is at the point where our senior population outnumbers our student population.
It's the fastest-growing segment of your population, your senior population and your soon-to-be senior population, 45 to 64. So I'd like to do something on.
Forty-five? Soon, soon. You'll be able to move in.
Forty-five to 64, that's the.
That's the upcoming seniors?
That's how they define it.
Bill would like to design his own unit, if you don't mind. Holy Jesus. That makes me ancient.
If we could find a property that's suitable. I know that Massachusetts Housing Partnership will work with us for free to help move this to the point where the state will fund the project.
Beautiful. Let's do it.
Yeah.
Can that get done by spring, do you think?
Well, seeing it took us eight years in Westminster, that might be an ambitious timetable.
How many units did they put up there, Steve?
They're going to build 50. They break ground this spring.
Yeah, okay, eight years, huh?
Yeah, eight years to split off the lot, get it surveyed, choose a developer. It took three rounds of applying for funds before the state finally funded us. So.
Okay.
All right, so I'm gonna work with the conservation agent to host an interdepartmental meeting to review the town's new storm water management permitting system. I don't really understand it. Your DPW director doesn't really understand it. We'd like to get a handle on it so that projects that come before us comply with the storm water permitting system. So we'll do that over the spring. I'm sure your conservation agent will set us all straight on that. The big thing you hired me for is to continue to manage the planning board's caseload on a day-to-day basis. And that includes fixing a lot of the problems that were created from decisions made long ago. And that's in addition to dealing with people who come into town and wanna know how to develop, so. Well, that'll be an ongoing task. I'm going to continue to participate in the Regional Planning Commission's Brownfield Steering Committee and Comprehensive Economic Development Committee. I'm gonna continue to search out grant opportunities and share them with you as I find them. And should the state and regional entities ever host meetings again in person, I will continue to attend and advocate for Sterling's interests. So that's my work program for the year. Any questions?
That's all?
Yeah.
John, any questions for Stephen?
I would think number four might be the most maybe high priority, although there's no, that's the performance zone and the table uses for commercial and industrial. Although there's no deadline on that, but I would think that rewriting some of these or updating them is.
Yeah, it's a biggie.
It's gonna take a lot of time. It's crucial to be done, though it has to be done, you know, along with the planning board stuff. No, it's a great list. Again, I guess prioritizing is, it'll, that's an ongoing thing, too. Things will probably move around quite a bit.
They always do.
Some of these are a lot longer than one year. The only other thing, I meant, I was gonna just talk to you about, I haven't had a chance to stop in, so I don't know why, Christmas holidays. But long-term, I don't know if you probably wanna have a chat with Ryan over at DPW regarding a long-term water supply option for our town. I think it's something we've been kicking around for a few years. And with, I know we get the Crowley roll, we have the wells, and I think we're good for the short term. But Kama handed me a document, goes back about 139 years to colonial time. No, it goes back to almost, to about 1970, was it Congress? Seventy-five. And it was a bill that our predecessors had put together regarding, as far as the legislature in Boston, regarding a potential tie-in to the Wachusett Reservoir at some point, obviously with no cost. And I handed out to our state rep last week. Should've done it two weeks ago, but I forgot. But I got it to her. So I'm gonna be asking her to check it to see if it died on the vine. I think it probably did, nothing ever happened. But all the local reps at the time, the board of select, everybody had signed off on it. And so they obviously thought back 50, 60 years ago that, you know, a lot of supply, pretty important thing in every community. And I've often thought, you know, there's gotta be some avenue to do that if we absolutely need to. It's probably, obviously something we don't need in the next five or 10 years. But I think long-term, if we have access to it, maybe get the ball rolling and looking at it, you know. Just a thought, I think Ryan might be interested in talking. I know it's not, nothing's gonna happen immediately. But if I find out more about that, what happened to that bill.
Yeah, please let me know.
I'll let you know, but I can.
I'll be glad to work with Ryan on that. I've met with him a handful of times already, talking about various issues, your aquifer or your groundwater protection district and how that impacts zoning and his thoughts on that. So I'm sure we'll work together on that.
The WikiPiki is something that we have, it's probably more doable. But I mean, even that has obstacles to it. Between the two towns, the reservoir up here north of town towards Lemonster, what the heck, Haywood Road. Yeah, WikiPiki.
Yeah, Clinton owns that land. I just talked to the Clinton Town Planner last week. They're not willing.
I was gonna say, did he wanna talk to you? Because usually not.
Well, you know, we had a nice conversation. He wants to get together sometime in the new year to talk about zoning in our southeast corner and some options that could open up that area for development. So I'm all on board for that. But I was talking with him about perhaps selling us the WikiPiki
Yeah.
properties.
Yeah.
For recreation and trails, but no, they like the hoba to them.
Yeah, they do.
Other questions?
Yeah, so I just have a question on the multifamily zoning overlay district. If such a district would be created, does that change the assessment on the existing houses that are within that? Would there be any change to it?
I don't know the answer to that question without talking to the assessor. We are looking at two vacant properties along that North Row Road. So two properties that are vacant. They're in chapter, they're in the chapter program. But I do know that the trust that owns them has come to town asking about how much they would pay in rollback taxes should they ever develop those properties. So they're two properties under the same ownership. We may have to expand and take in another property once we go through the, applying the state's suitability model, which is the next topic on my agenda with you. But if you've got any further questions on my work program, let's get those out of the way.
Okay, I just have, and this goes along with the note you sent, Stephen. I missed the Economic Development Committee meeting where they're thinking of asking for $10,000 to study our performance zone. That's really not an EDC scenario that would come from the planning board, and you already have it on your list. If they're talking about the particular performance zone up on 140, we already took that to town meeting and got shot down once. Not that we can't go back again. But the money is my question, $10,000, increase the. And I'll bring it up to them at the next meeting, but I don't know. Were you there when they talked about the $10,000?
No, I wasn't. So I'm not sure what kind of study they have in mind for the performance district. But whatever they'd like to study out there, there's a very high possibility that Mass Development would fund such a study through their Site Readiness Grant Program. Now, we, in Westminster, we availed ourselves of that grant program in 2018 to size up the infrastructure needs of our two main industrial districts. And as part of that, they did a regional market analysis, which essentially told us what industries are scouting our area and what they need for access, land, and infrastructure. So I've sent that report to both the planning board and the EDC. But if there's something else they wanna study out there, I would suggest we invite someone from Mass Development to come out and see if they could help us with the funding and the expertise.
But again, I go back to, it's not really an economic development. They're just a committee, you know, it's like they don't. $10,000 is a lot of money for something that should be under the purview of the planning board, pretty much.
I won't argue that point.
Come on. All right, all right, so that's something that we should bring up at our next EDC meeting. I couldn't make the last one, but I don't think Mr. King would think that was a great idea either. Would you, Mr. King?
I scrutinize the budget proposal a lot.
Yeah, okay. All right, so I'm fine, Stephen. I appreciate all of what you've done so far. I know, you know, you've been here a whole two months and it's been a lot of learning, I'm sure.
Well, this is something I plan on doing every January, stopping in here, briefing you on what I plan to do for the upcoming year. I may come back in the summer just to give you an update on.
Oh, absolutely, we wanna see you more than that. Updates are always welcomed from any. And actually, at one point before the whole COVID hit, we'd ask different departments to come in and give us updates on what they're doing, what they need, and how we can help them move forward. So we'll see you again.
Speaking of helping me move forward.
Oh, damn it.
I'm going to need you to sign a letter requesting district local technical assistance from the Regional Planning Commission.
I've got that right here.
They will help us move this MBTA zoning issue along. They will help us run the state suitability model. There's about 50 factors that you have to punch into the computer program, and it'll spit back the density and whether it meets what you're supposed to have or not. So I wanna work with them on that. They will prepare the ultimate map of the new district that I'll use for public presentations and town meeting. And they'll also provide us with the state model zoning bylaw that is currently in the works. I'm going to revise it based on what I think Sterling wants. But we'll have them take a look at it to make sure it doesn't run afoul of the state model. So that's essentially my DLTA request to the Regional Planning Commission. I hope you see fit to approve it.
Always happy to work with the MRPC as far as any of this DLTA grant business. So we don't have a cost on that at all yet?
No, there's no cost to us. It's.
Out of 50/50?
No, no.
Oh, even better. Sure, here you go.
That is state money that they allot to the Regional Planning Commissions across the state, used to fund them to help towns like ours with their zoning issues.
Yeah, just in the past, we've had to do some matching funds. So you're telling me we got screwed?
We still created the MBTA.
Yes, exactly.
Almost a couple of bucks to fix it.
All right, well, then I would entertain a motion that we approve Mr. Wallace to move forward with the MRPC as far as the DLTA grant.
Why for the sum over?
Exactly.
All is in favor?
Coin aye.
Smith aye.
Grant's aye. All right.
Good morning.
Thank you, Stephen.
You're welcome.
Good night.
Good night. Okay, so that's that. Okay, the Recreation and Roadways for April 8th is next on our agenda. It's pretty much the same thing that we've done for the last few years. And Sherry's been very efficient as far as checking with all the entities that need to be checked with. As far as the school, police, fire, all of that. And signage is all set, ready to roll. So that's actually Saturday, April 8th. They started Griffin Road. They start at Griffin Road, and it's a 5K and a 10K, leave about nine o'clock. Runners and walkers are both, both welcome, and people will see it publicized as we move forward.
The only difference I can remember from, I don't know, a couple of years ago, I think I walked it last year, was the 10K thing, when they left, they took a right on Greenland, Greenland Road, and they took a right up to, it's on here, up to 62.
Yeah.
And instead of reversing back and coming back down the same road to the, to the Griffin Road, they're going up 62, down the bottom of the hill, and taking a right on Jewett Road. So, again, Saturday mornings, you know, nine, 10 o'clock, I don't think there's a lot of cars that go by at, at that point, but that's where the, I think, well, it's a wide road though, and they have plenty of room on the right-hand side, so I don't think there's a lot of police presence, but they've got, I mean, you know, the chief knows about it, and I think has approved all this. So that was the only major difference I saw in the, the road itself, that there could be a little more traffic on that, but they have it in here, I bet. Again, I have no problem with it, I just bring it up for something to say. Unless you guys had an issue with it, that was the only major.
Super.
Very good, see.
I'm all set with it.
No concerns.
I would entertain a motion to approve the plans that Recreation has in place, it's the safety plan for the Recreation Road Race on April 8th.
Sum over.
Seconded.
All those, yeah. All those in favor?
Coin aye.
Smith aye.
Kill me. All right, and the Eagle Scout project, we don't have anybody to present that. It's a very in-depth plan.
Yeah.
And it's actually to, it's presented by, or put in here by Charles Smith, and it's to refurbish the Sterling Memorial Park Bandstand or gazebo. So, anybody have any questions on that, or?
Yeah, my only comment is that hopefully it's ready by the Memorial Day Services, that's all, because I think somewhere here it said it would be done by April or May, and I think that that should be emphasized to the scouting, to the Eagle Scout and its sponsor, that hopefully it's, you know, of course, weather could be an issue, but as long as it's, bulk of it is done by May for the Memorial Day thing, I think there's no problem with it at all.
Well, I think the whole project will depend on whether an availability of product would be what it is, but certainly welcome.
Oh, yeah, definitely need a.
Service project, I know that the Eagle Scouts are often looking for service projects.
Great job with it too.
Anything from you, Mr. Smith?
No, I'd like to see this get done by the Scouts, I think it's a good project.
So, I'm all for entertaining a motion to approve the Eagle Scout project to refurbish the bandstand at Memorial Park.
Sum over.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Coin aye.
Smith aye.
Grant's an aye. And we have all the paperwork from Mr. Smith right in our, in our binders. So, I'd like to go back to the beginning as far as approval of the minutes.
I read the Madam Chair, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve the quarter minutes for the Town of Sterling for December 21st, 2022, without change.
Seconded.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Coin aye.
Smith aye.
Grant's an aye. Okay, and then we have Town Administrators' Report.
Sure. Just a few things, it's obviously been fairly quiet because of the two holidays, but we have finalized the contract for the roof on this building, so hopefully in the spring we can start construction and get that replaced. You know, it's been a fairly long overdue project. I'm gonna get to the other thing, we have the agreement with West Boylston, will be on our next agenda for the Building Commissioner, they've signed off on it, so it'll be in our packets and agenda next month. We are finally done with it.
Thank God.
Yep. Budget requests, with the exception of a couple of them, because their board meets next week, should have all of those things in by the end of the week, so then we'll start putting it all together, seeing how it looks, and then a couple of weeks after that, we'll start meeting with the Finance Committee and finishing up the capital side of things as we move forward through the season and start putting the warrant together. We have applied for the state funds for the playground, the Economic Development Bill passed, so we have that in, hopefully to get the money early, or either late January or early February. I'm guessing most people have seen their, or got their quarter three and four tax bills in, quarters one and two were two and a half percent over the previous year, three and four are the actuals based on the town meeting vote and properties assessed at January 1st as the assessors came in, I don't know, about a month ago, and explained to us. So this would be the actual based on what was approved at town meeting and the new assessments, so some of that offsets the other, they are based on the previous January 1st evaluations. And then the other thing that's in your packet is the letter from Weston and Sampson, we received the grant funds on the small, or rural and small-town community grant program through our community one-stop application. So obviously, that is one of the bigger projects that we're looking toward, and basically it is between 62 and the Route 12, or the two sections of 62, here out on Route 12 and the common area. I guess three of the big ideas are pedestrian and road traffic safety, improving and increasing parking, and a little bit of a beautification part to it. Obviously, this has been going on for, I don't know, four or five iterations and, I don't know, 20 or so years. I think the first one I saw was 99, maybe? That sounds familiar.
2007 is when we took it off the shelf.
I've definitely seen 2007 too. So, this time last year, Weston and Sampson came in with the original proposal, which would kinda talk about the above-ground work, sidewalks, roadway, burying the utilities, Verizon, Comcast, and SMLD work, so that obviously is still a part of it, we have that approved, the funding is there. The grant funding that we got for $135,000 would be to do the design and engineering for the underground infrastructure, the water main, and what drainage goes through downtown. So there's a few different tasks that go through there, the water main, the drainage, the parking, the sidewalks, the roadway, and lighting, so that's obviously, you know, pretty much what it is. So they have done the majority of Task One, which is update the base plans and field investigation. What do we have, where is it? Obviously, they're adding in the water main and drainage to that, looking at what we have, where things are, how that's going to affect the project through the spring, and if you have your last sheet in there, kinda tells you what things are gonna go on, the preliminary design through the end of this month, or through this month and through probably the end of April, we'll look at the preliminary design, both the horizontal and vertical items, so above and below ground, the lighting design, which SMLD does, but they need where are things are going to be also, the watershed analysis and pipe sizing, what's going to be best for the town, and as we start looking at where the water goes, and also where the water main is, you know, obviously, it hasn't been replaced in, I don't know, probably 100 years. We don't wanna be doing a project above ground and have to redig everything up because, you know, 100-year-old water main breaks. In there, probably the month of May, maybe even into early June, the town would review the preliminary design, review with the architects, engineers, what we need, what we like, what we don't like, what needs to change, and then move in through the summer into final design. That should probably go into the beginning of November, based on their plan, and then they would, you know, try to finalize that, work on the bid documents. It would be my hope that we can use some of the remaining ARPA money to at least start things coming out of the, or going into the next construction season in, in early 2024. They would help us with the bid documents, the bidding services, including the advertising, the bidding, the reference checks, helping to get the contract awarded, which is obviously our part, but, you know, what we, what we need to do there, and then looking at the construction administration. So, between the ARPA funds, I know the Water Department plans on doing another borrowing. It won't be this town meeting, the next town meeting for water main stuff, which they may use a portion of that, which would help us along, and then if we were able to get a Mass Works grant, should we get through all the MBTA and adjacent community things, that might be able to offset because we're gonna be using some of our money as part of it. You know, we may actually see this project come to fruition and actually finish.
Okay.
So if you have any questions on this, I can get them back to Weston and Sampson. If we don't, we could get that signed and returned to them so they can start working on the preliminary design. The back pages, I feel like I'm missing one. At the cost, so it has the grant in there, the additional fee, and also the revised original fee, because there is a timeline on the grant funding, we wanted to front-load the grant funding portion of it, so that comes out earlier than, than not, and that would be the total design fee. Task seven in there would be representative services for engineering, that's probably not the way we're going to go, but at least it's in there for budgeting purposes, so.
Yeah, it was a significant little increase for the, is that like the clerk of the works or something?
Yeah, it'd be basically an onsite engineer, so it would probably behoove the town either as a temporary hire, to hire an engineer, or use them, but, you know, $250,000 for them here for the construction doesn't seem, you know.
Yeah, that seemed high.
Physically good.
That seemed a little high, but.
So where you're doing all the underground things, utilities, drainage, you definitely want somebody that knows what's going on with it.
Well, they did say they'd provide one full-time resident representative to observe construction of the project. Now, is that, that's built in, I think, that's number seven, right, resident representative?
It's for budgeting purposes only at this point, that's not part of the design and anything else, we'd have to elect to that later.
Okay, but up top, number six, it does say, it does say will not produce a full-time resident engineer, but will periodic visits during the construction, 24 site visits.
Yeah.
Review and approve shop drawings, responses to requests for information, et cetera, assistance to the town, and the approval of contractor pay right. So I think they're extremely detailed, and I think they're, they've got a handle on this whole thing, I think you're right, we'll have to take a look to see, do we want an additional local, I don't know, professional contractors, you know, just kinda serve as a part-time.
Yeah.
Some part-time oversight to us, that's down the road. The only other thought, I mean, this is a good little timeline, again, as you said, monitoring prep, I know people want it done tomorrow, but, I mean, these things have to play themselves out, there's a lot of design, there's a lot of feedback they're gonna get. All, most of the feedback for the final, not the preliminary, the final design, looks like it has to happen between January of 2023 and April of this year, is that, is that a correct statement, or?
So they would be doing, the blue stuff is, is their work, getting all the information and the preliminary design done. Our piece would be in May, which would, you know, Ryan, if Sean is still there, the new, new director at SMLD, select board, whatever input we have, if we need to change anything based on their initial designs.
Yeah, okay. So when, when will we have to identify final funding for this thing? Looks like construction doesn't begin until.
It would not be this.
March of 2025, so we have some time on this, but.
Twenty, 24 construction season.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, tw- uh.
You're, you're.
My eyes aren't working.
No, I.
Oh, March of 2024, I'm sorry, okay, so that's coming up pretty quick. One year's not that far down the road for a project like this.
No.
So, all right. I know we have various sources, so I guess the thing you're right, and the grants could fact, we'll, hopefully we'll factor into it as well, so. That's a lot.
That's a lot, but maybe that's your legacy now. David?
It's not gonna get any cheaper.
Oh, no, that's for sure.
Push this off, the more it's gonna cost, it's a project that needs to get done.
Yeah, absolutely.
And also, if we're involved with Mass Works, which we haven't been right along, I mean, nobody's ever put us into that little queue. They're very much interested in infrastructure and downtown revitalization, et cetera, and so on, so, you know, we've had the representatives at the EDC meetings, and they all voiced the same opinion, you know, get involved with Mass Works, so.
And one of the, one of the scoring criteria is what a town can provide on their end as well, so if we're putting up, you know, X amount of dollars, it, it's a lot easier to sell to put whatever we're asking for in there as well.
In 12.
Maybe 13.
Well, there's in-kind work too, like SMLD has full intentions of doing their portion, and DPW's in-kind.
And their portion is, is good to go, we have the funding through ARPA and town funds for Comcast and Verizon, so when we get to the point of ready to do the underground, removing the poles and burying that, that is all ready to go and funded unless a cost adjustment happens.
Yeah.
Good job.
Okay, Mr. King, you have anything for us?
Uh, no, nothing new since the holidays, we're still at 6 and 6, so we are recruiting to drive work, and we're almost full staff.
Okay.
We're ready and raring to go once, I think Bill said, somewhere around the 13th, we get the first glimpse at the budget.
Yeah.
And then we have a schedule laid out to meet with the various departments at the end of January, so.
Oh, Austin's doing all of them, right? Yeah, that's good for him.
In lieu of doing the March all-day session, we're going to have them.
Two, two sessions at the end of January, is what the plan is right now.
What, what do you?
We're gonna plan two evening meetings with the various departments, Bill's helping us coordinate who's gonna attend each one, and we'll review the budget submittals from each department at each one of those two meetings, and that'll be in lieu of that kinda all-day session that we had last year in March.
Okay. Well, the benefit of having that is, it's filmed, for one thing, and it gives the community the sense of what's going on, because they don't actually show up physically, you know, and then they can check it on the live stream, so that's the benefit of having.
They play.
That done, and the daytime thing, I suppose an evening for a department head versus a Saturday doesn't make a big difference. But the other thing too, to keep in mind, whether it be you or Christopher, usually do a presentation with SLCT, as, you know, once you get the budget in line, so it would be somebody from Finance with the Town Administrator, and possibly somebody from the board.
And that, that may be good for March, what we, what we're talking about was doing that earlier so that we can see it out of the gate as opposed to, after everything's already been approved.
Yeah.
Doing the March taping might be good, you know, this is what we're actually presenting.
Yeah.
And that way, you know, departments can come in, answer any questions that the board has early, as opposed to later on.
Our main goal is to try and move the whole schedule up as soon as we can.
Yeah, get the whole, the whole warrant actually out as early as possible. Okay. Kama?
It's my understanding that the board does agree with the Weston and Sampson proposal, could you please vote to sign off on that agreement?
Yeah.
So, so that we can send it.
I would entertain a motion to sign off on the Weston and Sampson agreement.
Sum over.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Coin aye.
Smith aye.
Grant's an aye. All right. Anything from you, David, PSA-wise?
I don't have anything, sorry.
Okay, no, no sorries, shortens the meeting.
Just, yeah, recovering.
Great to ask the guy on my left.
Well, as you know, it's an election year, five months will seem. Five months seems like a long time, but it's really not. And just, oh, I think it's fair to let people know that I don't plan on running for reelection this year. So I'm hoping, I know, I know, I'm hoping that some good people will, will come forward and just step up. Nine years has been a long time. Nine other years on FENCOM is a long time, but if it happens the way I hope, then I don't plan on being invisible, I don't plan on running away. So I'd be happy to, Mr. King has a room on the FENCOM or Ms. Shepherd on Capitol or another committee, I'd be happy to continue on and maybe a less, a little bit lesser role, that's all. But it's just kind of time. I've just been thinking about it, you know, iron ear issues, all kinds of weird things. But I also want to play more golf and stuff like that, I'll be honest with you. But, but I don't, I really don't want to run, and I think that it's time for somebody, some, there are a lot of good people out in Sterling, and they just, I'm sure somebody will step forward. And I think it's just the evolution, you know, so that's all. Happy New Year, and, and that's that. I'll go to say later, if you give me time later, I'm going to run.
Never mind. Never mind. Well, that's interesting, but I get where you're coming from and where you're going.
People, they're going to want to think about it, take out papers, and if they have any questions, I'll be happy to do my best to answer them and explain what times require, what's involved. And I'm sure you will, and Dave will, and I know Bill will too. So it's just a matter of just letting people know well in advance, that's all.
Okay, then.
Mixed emotions about it, to be honest, but just going to make these calls every once in a while, you know.
Fine then. Okay, I really don't have anything. It's been a couple of really interesting weeks with the holidays and everything, but I do wish everybody a Happy New Year and wish everybody good health. And most importantly, be kind. Just be kind.
Absolutely.
And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Full coin eye.
Smith, aye.
Grant's an aye.